16th, 2024 meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. Everybody's doing well tonight? What did I say? October? Let's make that November 6th, 2024 meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. Speaking of time warps, right?
Yeah.
Okay. First up is the, let me actually make this announcement. Alternate Commissioner Carol Riege will be participating tonight as not all of the regular commissioners are present, so thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
First up is the approval of our minutes from October 16th, 2024. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes on October 16th, 2024.
Second? It's moved in second and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Next up, we have a consent agenda tonight with one item for AFP-9958-2024, an 858 square foot two-story addition and screen porch enclosure at 304 Alderwood Drive in the R90 medium-density residential zone. This is an amendment to final site plan, and again, it's a consent agenda. Are there any questions on the consent agenda?
No.
All right, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent item on the agenda for tonight.
Second?
So moved in second and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. All right. So now, we have our site plan agenda, and we have a few of those. First up is AFP-9873-2024, development of an additional 36 parking spaces for an existing grocery store at 33 Dalamar Street in the C2 corridor development and C2 general commercial zones. This is an amendment to final site plan, and presenting from staff is Caroline Sidon. Good evening, Caroline.
Good evening. Staff is before you tonight to present amendment to final site plan application AFP 9873-2024. The subject site, which should be up on an aerial, is located at 33 Dalamar Street, which also now includes a vacant lot that was formally addressed as 412 North Frederick Avenue. The two parcels were recently consolidated into one parcel in anticipation of this application, and the zoning on the property is actually split between the C2 general commercial zone for the grocery store and the C2 corridor development zone for the parking lot addition. The applicant received final site plan approval SP 9224-2022, which was a reapproval of SP 7932-2018 for a 26,600-square-foot Mega Mart grocery store and associated surface parking. Property has subsequently been developed in accordance with the site plan, and the grocery store is operational. And the applicant is now proposing to construct an additional surface parking lot, which will net 36 additional parking spaces. This application was reviewed and approved under the zoning ordinance that was in effect at the time of submission, which is our previous zoning ordinance. So all of my references will be from the previous zoning ordinance. The application comes before the planning commission in accordance with Section 24-172A, which requires the planning commission to grant amendments to approved final site plans. And also, as part of this application, the applicant is requesting a waiver from Section 24-218E of the parking ordinance to permit a 23-foot drive aisle width and also tandem parking spaces. Here to present tonight is Andy Bradshaw of JBA Associates, so I will turn it over to him.
Thank you, Caroline.
Good evening.
Good evening. Once again, I'll first congratulate you guys on the new chambers. It looks really great. And I can, I can agree with you that sometimes I'm mistaken for October instead of November with weather like we have outside, if not September or August.
Thank you for that. Now I have an excuse.
So my name, for the record, is Andy Bradshaw from Johnson Burnett Associates. I'm a civil engineer. I'm representing on behalf of the owner, 7 Dalamar Street LLC, as they couldn't be with us today. We're a civil engineering firm that's been in the city many of years. We're located at 205 North Frederick, just up the street, and always enjoy working here. So I first like to thank staff for all their support on this amendment, not only amendment, but through all the work of the previous approvals for that grocery store, Mega Mart. Like we said, we were here in front of you in March of 2019 for the original approval, again, in April of 2022 because of delayed construction for COVID. And the grocery store has been a great success, not only for the owner, but for the, for the community. We hear the best things about it, and they really enjoy their new location, much more space over there, as opposed to their previous location across the east side of 355 and that shopping center. So hence the success is why we're here today, to request the approval for the additional parking lot for a net increase of 36 parking spaces. So I just, I know we're all familiar with it, but I'd like to just kind of orient on where we're at in here. Let me see. So you can see on the screen in front of you, the new Mega Mart location just at the east of Montgomery County Fairgrounds, north of the Ferris Oaks Cemetery as part of the original application. It also included the parking lot to the north across the street of Dalamar Street. And as Caroline pointed out, they have consolidated the previously vacant lot to the east at the southwest corner of Dalamar Street and North Frederick Avenue, and that's where the parking lot will be expanded. Here's a zoning map confirming Caroline's statement of that it's a split zone, C2 where the shopping center was, and the vacant lot was C D zone. Just as kind of context of the previous site plan approval and roughly where this parking lot's going to be expanded to. So where the parking lot will be expanded is the vacant lot. This is a, this is a recent aerial photo from January showing the constructed Mega Mart grocery store and the vacancy of that lot, where it used to be a previous garden center over there back in the day. So to confirm, or confirm that basically the applicant's proposing to the parking lot extension for an additional 36 parking spaces. The expansion will also include streetscape improvements along Dalamar Street, which will connect the grocery store up to the 355 sidewalk, where currently there's not that connection on the southern side of Dalamar Street today. There's also some small improvements to the existing loading dock curb, just to give them a little bit more room and to help out with some drainage issues from that adjacent public alleyway. Here's some quick pictures, just summarizing what we talked about. This is the front view of the existing store, which would be facing to the east towards 355, just the rest of it to the, further to the south. This is a view from the north face up Dalamar Street to 355. Here's a picture taken from the parking lane where you can see the expanded parking lot will be. It'll be located, the parking drive aisles match up. You can see exactly kind of where it's going to be straightforward. Here's that existing vacant lot consisting of mostly broken gravel, asphalt, just really hard impervious surfaces. It's been this way for as long as I can remember. There's two existing curb cuts, one on Dalamar Street and one on 355, which both will be closed, along with the, the fencing you can see in this picture will all be removed. And lastly, here's a view from the parking lot looking down into the parking lot of where it's going to be connected to, if it gives you some context. So this amendment, like I said, will close both of the parking spaces and will be connected internally to the existing parking streets, so everything will stay internal to the site. As Caroline pointed out, requesting a waiver of drive aisle widths from 26 foot to 23 foot, the same waiver was granted as part of the previous approval for the Mega Mart grocery store. And then also, we're requesting the waiver for the use of tandem spaces. This is an employee-only parking lot that will be just for employees and the Mega Mart vans. As you know or don't know, the Mega Mart provides a free service to their clients for picking up and dropping off after groceries. So this will be used for the vans and the employees. So that's why we support the use of the tandem spaces, because we can be controlled, they can be controlled via shifts, et cetera, internal to the site, and the parking lot will be properly signed as well. Just some little circulation that we had to do. The project will also propose to meet stormwater management for the additional impervious area through two microbioretention planters shown in blue at the corners of the parking lot as everything drains from right to left. All forest conservation and landscaping will be met via onsite landscaping. The landscaping species will continue this, the species and quantities and spacing as the previous grocery store development did to keep a, you know, consensus feel for the site. It'll also buffer the parking lot from Dalamar Street and 355. So that, I believe, concludes my presentation of it. I'm here to answer any questions, and thank you again for your time tonight.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have one.
Go ahead.
Since this is like employee or, you know, restricted, is there going to be signage to indicate that?
Yes.
Because I didn't see it in here.
Yes, there'll be signs, there'll be signs at the entrance to that little small connection from the main driveway there. Just want to make it clear.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Question, just about the water runoff in the area. And from the picture, it looks like there may be some grass there. Is it, is it currently all impervious surface, what you're looking at?
It's not, the existing?
Yeah.
The existing condition, it's really hard to see from those pictures. It's really broken asphalt and compacted.
Okay.
But it's not all impervious. So we're, our calculations, where we work closely with public works staff to determine what the existing conditions were for it, and it is deemed to be some non-impervious surface, and so the stormwater calculations reflect that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, anything else? Let me look here on the, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this application? Okay. And if there's anybody online, you know the routine with hitting the raise hand button if you'd like to comment on this, and we'll keep an eye out for that hand to go up, and if so, we'll call on you. In the meantime, what's the recommendation?
Staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony and staff report, findings and recommendation, grant AFP 9873-2024, amendment to final site plan, and ENV 9801-2024, amendment to final forest conservation plan, finding them in compliance with Sections 24-170 and 24-172A of the city's code, with one condition that is included in your package. And then there's a second recommendation separate from that. Do you want me to do both of them?
Sure.
Okay. Staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony and staff report, findings and recommendation, grant a parking waiver of Section 24-218E of the city's zoning ordinance for a parking module waiver, finding it in conformance of Section 24-222A.
Thank you. Any questions on the recommendation?
Nope.
All right. Your thoughts, commissioners, on this?
I think it's a much better use of the property than previously. I also think that it's a, it's a very good thing that Mega Mart's doing well and that it is as successful as it has been, and that this would also free up a lot of space so that people do, that do drive will be able to get greater access to the supermarkets. So I think it's a win-win.
Agreed, thank you.
I, I, I remember this when it came before us, and I was really happy to see that you are going to offer free rides to individuals. I mean, I know we're talking about parking here, but I really, really am very happy to see how that's working. I've been there a couple times, and it's really a great service that you offer to the community, and I'm happy that you're doing well.
Thank you, I'll pass that along to the client, to my client.
I'll just, I'll add something site plan-ish. And just, and just say, I think, I think the planning paint is good, and really happy to see the connectivity of the sidewalk. Obviously, it was a bit of heartburn on the original application that we had this big broken pathway to what we all hoped and turned out to be a neighborhood attract, attracting amenity. So that's all great, wonderful. And then adding that big, beautiful red maple to the corner is, I think, going to be the right choice. I think it will, October glory, right? The big, the big red maples, they get really big and beautiful, and so I think that'll be wonderful.
Right. Great, thanks.
And I just wanted to add, I think it's great that the vans will be parked, you know, visible to 355, that it's extra visibility for the grocery store itself.
Free advertising, free advertising, right?
Yeah, I echo Danny's comments about it's an interesting business model and a very, I think, a very valuable one for the community to have rise up. In the interest of reflecting what our master plan often speaks to and to just at least acknowledge that ordinarily, we would be, I think, a little resistant to adding surface parking along a major frontage like this, because, you know, our vision for Frederick Avenue, Frederick Road is to, is to do more with the streetscape that is, that is activated, and certainly a parking lot is not that. However, I think this is a unique enough condition that it makes all the sense in the world to follow through and enhance the, the operational development of this, because, because it's a great asset to the community. And recognizing all the while that as, as markets change, they could always revert back to something if, if, if the right opportunity comes along, and I think that that's, you know, that's an easy thing to see in the future, if it ever, if it was ever, ever necessary. So anyway, I just wanted to make sure we had the full, full recognition of what our, what our larger, larger goals are in mind for Frederick Avenue, and not to think that we're just looking to create lots of parking lots, but in the right place in the right time, and this is an example of that, it's, it's appropriate, right? And I'm going to check the online one more time. I don't see any hands up on this one. So if there, are there any other comments? Any concerns with the waiver on the parking drive aisle?
No.
Any, any concerns with the recommendation from staff on the approval?
No.
Okay, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony and staff report, findings and recommendation, grant AFP 9873-2024, amendment to final site plan and amendment to final forest conservation plan, ENV 9801-2024, finding them in compliance with Sections 24-170 and 24-172A of the city's code, with the one condition, it's read into the record.
Second?
So moved in second and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, and then would you please take care of the second motion?
Right, Mr. Chairman. I, that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony and staff report, findings and recommendation, grant a parking waiver of Section 24-218E of the city's zoning ordinance for a parking module waiver, finding it in conformance with Section 24-222A.
Second?
It's moved in second and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thanks very much, good luck.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
You too. Success. All right. Second site plan, our site plan agenda tonight is for AFP-9930-2024, and this is to convert an existing 5,847 square foot parking garage into office space at 804 West Diamond Avenue in the C2 general commercial zone. This is an amendment to final site plan as well. And presenting from staff is Kinar Johnson over here. I gotta get used to the fact that you're gonna be over here. Good evening.
Good evening. Staff is before you to present amendment to final site plan application, AFP 9930-2024. As shown on the screen, the subject property is located at 804 West Diamond Avenue. The applicant is requesting approval to, approval to convert a 5,847 square foot parking garage into an office space. This application becomes, comes before the planning commission in accordance with Section 2412-6, which requires a planning commission to grant final site plan approval. Jonathan Jolly is with Colliers Engineering, and he will be presenting the application before you today.
Great, good evening.
Good evening, commissioners. Once again, my name is Jonathan Jolly with Colliers Engineering and Design. With me this evening is project manager David Lee. We are both available for questions at the end of the presentation, which will be rather brief. As stated, the property in question is located at 804 West Diamond Avenue. As you can see, under the word site, the, in red, that is the building that we are speaking of this evening. It is surrounded by I-270, West Diamond Avenue and Bureau Drive as part of an overall development of office and commercial, commercial uses. We were going to just scroll through the property with some, with some pictures of the existing conditions first, so you can get a feel for the building. This is, this is the south elevation of the building, which we envision to be the front entrance when the improvements are completed. The facade is generally a brick tanish with, with standard windows fittings and, and commercial, commercial feel to the building. This is a view to the underground parking, well, I'm sorry, at-grade parking garage to the east, and this is an entrance that will be removed, that what you see in that picture will be closed off, and the curbing that you can see at the bottom of the picture with the shrubbery will be extended across that entrance and do landscaping installed as part of the application. This is switching to the west elevation as well. You can see into the existing parking garage beyond the shrubbery with some handicap parking stalls there. Moving to the floor plan exhibit, the area highlighted, this is the existing floor plan. The area highlighted in yellow is our first floor, first floor floor plan, where there are 16 parking stalls currently under, undercover. This area will now be transformed, not in, let me just clarify, the building is not increasing in size and footprint. It's simply being refab, reformulated to be in interior use. There'll be a new corridor included between the existing office space on this side of the drawling and our newly enclosed space that is former parking garage. Part of the application is to include new pedestrian access. So along the south elevation, this, if you want to see the pictures, this side, just want to get that back in your mind, this will be the new front. Oops, went a little too far with my pictures. So as you, right here where my hand is highlighting is going to be a new ADA access ramp for pedestrians entering the building, along with the new ramp, along with the new steps as well. This will be tied into our new, we'll go one more, sorry, with the elevations here. So this is the south elevation I was just highlighting in the plan view. You can see the new ramp here. The current existing elevations, this would be open to see the parking garage that is underneath level two. The facade will be matched with new brick exterior to match the existing condition with a new water table, as well as the accompanying windows and awnings as well. And then with the, that signage will be assigned and obviously applied for at the time when they fit it out in the future for future tenants. You can see the view to the east and to the west with the, with the new ramp and ADA access. Okay. This is our existing conditions and demolition plan exhibit. The area in question is right here where my cursor is. That is the, the parking garage as of right now. We will be removing the stalls within that space and fitting it out for the new office use. The site improvements will also include the restriping, removal of some striping on the northern parking lot, as well as a few stalls on the southern parking lot. This will be easily seen in the next slide as we move through it. Parking to the north will be adjusted slightly. Right now, there are some existing handicap stalls in this area of the property that are, that are not the code, they do not have the striped access aisle for van accessibility. So we are going to reconfigure those to be current, with, to me, current code. The dashed line in red is just to show you if a pedestrian parks there that is handicapped and needs to get to this side of the building. This is their designated ADA route, so that they do not need to walk into public access aisles. The, the building right here is highlighted, area of work in yellow, our new accessway along the south elevation and the new striping and cross, cross access or cross, crosswalk. This will, let me zoom in here. Here we go, this will be a little bit better. So as you can see, this is the northern area, Area B, we're calling it. We're simply restriping here. We're delineating the new striped area for the handicap space, so everything is compliant. And along the south face elevation, you can see our new handicap ramp here, our new steps. We are also adding as part of the application four inverted bike U racks for pedestrians that are bicycling to the facility or, you know, people that work in the building themselves. We will be constructing a nice new crosswalk here for two additional ADA parking stalls here and restriping these as well to tie in. And we'll go to the landscape plan next. We, this is the area along the south, I'm sorry, the, what is this, east elevation, right? East elevation where the curb is going to be removed for the entrance. We will be landscaping all, adding new shrubbery and ground cover plantings along this, this east and south elevations in this area, along here, right here, and all along this facade. We are currently working with staff to do the final selections for the plant material as well. There were some comments, we're just going to adjust them to be primarily all native now, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, there were a few that were, were not desirable, so we'll work with staff to, to make the best possible selections. Questions?
Anybody? Go ahead, Carol.
Oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, so for the, so for the public's understanding, you're going from right now, required space is 69, and with the restriping, you'll actually have a net plus of six spaces?
No, the, we, the, provided, the, the current, the new parking required is with the additional square footage enclosure is required to, is required at 69.
Right.
And we're providing 75, so we do, yes, we have a surplus of six, even with the removal of the 16 that are under.
And the restriping.
Correct, and the restriping, correct, sir.
Okay, so I wanted to clarify that for the public.
I have a question. Is this the building that's behind the Dogfish Head Restaurant? The 804?
Kind of, kind of.
Is that kind of, because?
I think it is, yeah.
That, that, because there's a series of buildings back there, they're all built at the same time. So where the current entrance is right now, isn't there like a, if you looked, if you were standing at the front entrance where it is right now, and you looked out into that sort of little cubby hole parking lot where it, it sort of goes in front of the building, isn't there a retaining wall that's straight, straight ahead?
Could you, which area are you speaking about, Commissioner?
I'm talking about where the current entrance is right now.
Okay, well, this is, we have, this is an entrance over here, and then?
The current entrance, and then there's a parking lot right in front of?
There's parking here, parking here, and here.
It's the parking that would be, that you could park right in front of the front door and walk right into the building with the various not-to-code handicap spots.
I don't think we are, but I don't think, yeah, we're, I don't believe we're impacting that at all, Commissioner.
Right, right, okay.
So this is, this is the west.
Yeah, that would be, that would be there.
Yeah.
Like on the opposite, if you, no, not, not there, but back to that first picture.
Go back?
Yeah, go back, that, right there.
Oh, you're thinking this way?
Yeah, I'm thinking if you just, you know, if you look straight ahead from that door, the parking lot is somewhat enclosed as it is, and I don't know if there's, I'm pretty sure there's a retaining wall. I don't know if that's part of the property or not, and so would it be part of the, quote, improvements to the parking lot?
No, I don't believe we, we, no, I do not believe we'll be impacting that at all. All right, any other questions? So let me ask about the parking calcs. So you net fewer parking, but you've added a lot of square footage. Has the use changed, our calcs changed, or is it, was it just that overparked all this time?
I can help provide some guidance on that. So with the zoning code update, we did relook at our parking requirements for office, so it's a combination of, of that, well, a lot of that, right? And that the code doesn't require as much parking as before.
Okay, yeah, so, okay, makes sense.
Yeah, with the, yeah, with the new use, with the new, with the new rates, it's a benefit now, since before it was probably designed overparked lately.
The, the existing entrance to the building, right, tucked into that little corner, do you consider that the primary entrance to this new space? Or is the new space, the primary entrance for the new space where the handicapper, the new handicap ramp is, from the outside?
It's, my understanding, it's going to be the new, the new, the new south elevation that will be the primary entrance.
That's the primary, okay.
Right, because we're, we're putting in, we're designing the pedestrian cross access, the crosswalks, the ADA stalls.
Okay.
As well as the ramp.
So does that drive aisle, I don't know how big it is now, but is that going to generate any kind of layby, you know, you're going to have deliveries, people dropping off, I mean, things that would happen ordinarily at the main entrance to some commercial or office space?
I do not believe it's going to generate any new, you know, extensive loading requirements.
Okay.
That would be, that would be in conflict with the, with the pedestrian.
People backing out, people getting in there?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can clarify just a bit. So I think the current intent is that this new space is a single-story, multi-tenant, three-door entry to only that space, and has a service corridor in the back that connects to the elevator.
That's how I read it, yeah.
Yeah.
So the main entry is still where it is. So the main entry for the upstairs.
No, but that main entrance is not serving this new space, because they really get their own primary stuff on, on the street.
Yep.
Which might generate a little bit of interesting kind of stacking there when they get deliveries or drop offs or whatever.
Fair enough, yeah.
Just something to keep an eye on.
There's a service corridor in the back, those are what it gets.
Yes, that's true.
All right. Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
Curiosity, would that new entrance have a new numerical designation for identification?
Oh, I would, I will say, I would assume so. I don't have the, I don't have the architect on record with me this evening, but I would think there would be, have to be some new signage.
Danny, do you have something?
No.
Oh, okay. All right. Now let me do this. Well, first of all, is there anybody in the audience that would like to comment on this application? Okay. And then I'll ask the same for anybody online. If you'd like to comment on this application, please do hit the raise hand icon. We'll keep an eye out for you. I'm not seeing anybody yet. Kinar, you want to do the recommendation, please?
Staff recommends the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony, the staff report, staff findings, and staff recommendation, grant AFP nine-nine-three-zero twenty-two-four amendment to final site plan approval, finding it in compliance with section twenty-four twelve dot six and section, and twenty-four twelve dot six G of the city's zoning ordinance with one condition. The applicant is to submit revised plans to address staff comments related to the site plan and elevation cleanup, to be approved by Planning and Department of Public Work Staff prior to the final signature of the plan.
Great. Any questions on the recommendation?
Very straightforward.
Well, I'll start. What a nice piece of balance. We've added parking on one side of the city and then we get to take it away on this side and activate some of the space.
Yeah.
Right, man?
Yeah. Asphalt for asphalt, I'm all for it.
Keeps it interesting.
Okay.
Are you feeling okay?
Any, any concerns with the recommendation?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. All right, is there a motion, please?
Move that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony, the staff report, staff findings, and staff recommendation, grant AFP nine-nine-three-zero dash twenty-two-four amendment to final site plan approval, finding it in compliance with twenty-four dash twelve point six E and twenty-four dash twelve point six G of the city's zoning ordinance with the one condition written into the record.
Second?
It's been moved in second. And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? It passes unanimously. Thanks very much. Good luck.
Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you, staff.
Great to see some, some redevelopment happening over there. It's always a healthy sign. Thank you. All right, that takes us to our third site plan for the evening, which is STP dash nine-seven-three-six dash twenty-two-four to satisfy condition of approval for the Lake Forest Design Guidelines at seven oh one Russell Avenue in the MXD Mixed Use Development Zone. This was a schematic development plan condition. And Kinar, you're up again. Is that right?
Staff is before you to introduce the updated Lake Forest Design Guidelines associated with STP nine-seven-three-six twenty-two-four. The application is before the planning commission to satisfy condition of approval that require the planning commission to review and approve revised design guidelines. According to the condition, the applicant is required to amend the design guidelines to address the main facets. One, remove the commercial sign located at Odin Hall and Street One. Two, incorporate enhanced transit center strategies. Today we'll have Gary Unterberg of Rogers Consulting. He will be presenting the revised design guidelines for Lake Forest.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Gary Unterberg with Rogers Consulting, and I'm just doing the introduction tonight because Carolyn Sponza with Gensler will, will take you through the, the exhibits and the update to the guidelines.
Okay, thanks, Gary. Good evening, Commissioners, pleased to be here. My name's Carolyn Sponza. I'm a principal with Gensler, an architecture and planning firm responsible for the planning and design guidelines for Lake Forest Mall. Page down. As Kinar said, we are here to provide minor updates to the design guidelines that had previously been presented to you in meetings over the summer. Specifically, the revised design guidelines address two situations. The first is removing the commercial sign located at the quarter, corner of Odin Hall and Street One, and the second is provision of enhanced transit center strategies. The first item, the sign removal at the intersection of Odin Hall and Street One, is fairly straightforward. On page one-hundred-and-seventy-two of the guidelines, it has been removed from the diagram indicating schematic location of the signs and has also been edited in other locations in the guidelines. Moving forward on the transit center design, we've added four pages or two two-page spreads to talk about the transit center design. Each of these pages includes design principles, precedent images, and descriptions of key design features of elements that would be desirable for inclusion in the transit center. The spreads have been broken up into two components. The first, which talks about the site design guidelines, so basically organization of all of the ground-level controls and features of the site, and a second set of spreads that talks about architectural features. Before we move to the architectural features, a few key considerations for the site design guidelines were focuses on circulation and pedestrian safety, incorporation of high-quality and functional landscape buffers, and amenity provisions such as bollards and seating at key locations. On the architectural design guidelines, we focused more on the possibility of what might be there in the future, which could be a combination of bus shelters, platforms, canopies, and other unenclosed structures without a definitive plan. We were kind of left to creatively think about what some of the structural elements could look like. We encouraged in these guidelines use of creative structural elements, exposed structural elements, and high-quality finish material for any future canopies and spaces. At the ground human level, we detailed materials and desirable design features for windbreaks or screen walls, and also controls for graphics at the pedestrian level. These four new pages complement two pages that were previously included in the design guidelines that talk more about plan controls and interaction of the transit center with the planned buildings on Block F. Some key features here, we're promoting permeability, permeability between the western edge of Block F and the transit center and providing an activated ground-level experience throughout the block. So with that, I will pause for any questions.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
Nope.
Okay. Anything else on the presentation or is that, that it?
That's it.
That's, okay.
Thanks.
Is there anyone in the audience that was here to comment on this? I can show no. And if anybody's online that would like to comment on this, again, please do hit the raise hand button and we will connect you up. In the meantime, Kinar, you want to do the recommendation, please?
Sure. Staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the testimony in the record, and the staff report findings and recommendation find that the applicant has satisfied condition ten of the schematic development plan STP nine-seven-three-six twenty-two-four.
Great, thank you. Any questions on the recommendation?
No.
No? Okay. Any concerns on the proposed design guidelines or?
No, it's what I was hoping for, so it's great.
Good. Okay.
I know it was very contested during a lot of the hearings about what the transit center was going to look like and how it was going to fit in and so on and so forth. I think so far I've done a good job with it, so we're really, I'm really happy with what's, what it looks like right now.
Yeah, lots of tools to further design once it comes in, right?
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I think above all else too, there's a lot to recognize, there's a need to create comfort and safety for our folks that are out there in the outdoors waiting for their, their next, their next ride, and that's important.
Yeah.
If I can add, I think the lighting is adequate, but also recommends the, the safety there, so.
Yep.
Yeah, all right, so then I'll, I'll put in a little plug to just say we're not looking for CarMax level, you know, light levels. It's, it's, we're really looking for a more creative lighting stroke, you know, lighting design, you know, low, medium, top lighting that I think creates a bigger environment and it's not just about foot candles and, and, you know, shadowless environments. I think, I think, I think the design guidelines do a good job of giving us some tools that we're going to, you know, now have to work with the county, you guys are going to have to work with the county, with our help, obviously, staff's help, to make something that's, you know, attractive and safe, perception of safety anyway.
Thanks, indeed. All right, any other, any other comments?
Nope.
Any concerns with moving it forward?
No.
No? Okay. Is there a motion, please?
Okay. We make a motion that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the testimony in the record, and the staff report findings and recommendation, find that the applicant has satisfied condition number ten of schematic development plan STP, SDP, SDP nine-seven-three-six dash two-oh-two-four.
Second?
Moved in second. And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Now we look forward to seeing the actual transit center. We will be, come back soon.
Come back soon.
Come back soon.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to the last site plan on our site plan agenda tonight, and that is for SP dash nine-nine-four-seven twenty-two-four, convert an existing three-hundred-ninety-seven square-foot garage into an accessory dwelling unit at one-twenty-seven Hutton Street in the R ninety zone, medium-density residential zone. And this is final site plan and presenting from staff is Jasmine Forbes. Good evening again, Jasmine.
Good evening. So staff is before you to present final site plan application SP dash nine-nine-four-seven dash twenty-two-four. The subject property is located at one-two-seven Hutton Street in a zone R ninety. The property is located within the Deer Park subdivision. The applicant is requesting approval to convert an existing three-hundred-and-ninety-seven square-foot garage into an accessory dwelling unit. ADUs are permitted in the R ninety zone, but must, but must meet the standards in section twenty-four dash five point two. Pursuant to section twenty-four dash five point two E nine, ADUs detached from the primary structure must provide a minimum setback of ten feet from the side and/or rear lot lines. The existing garage is setback one foot six inches from the side side line. In accordance with section twenty-four dash five-two-nine C, the planning commission has the authority to reduce the required setback as part of a site development plan. The East Deer Park subdivision was established prior to the requirement of a final site plan. Therefore, this application is presented to the planning commission as a final site plan application. And I will have the applicant, Stefan Lucas, who will do the presentation this evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
We saved the best for last, right?
Oh, absolutely. So again, my name is Stefan Lucas. I am with Forum Nine Design, and again, we are converting this garage into an accessory dwelling. As you can see, located on the property, there is an existing single-family structure with a roughly twenty-foot by twenty-foot garage, right now being used for parking and storage. The owner or the client of the property would like to use this as a space for her daughter and son-in-law. So as you can see on the site plan, we have ample parking, enough for several cars, meeting the minimum of three. The additional parking space can be off to the side in addition to the two spaces for the primary residence. Here we have some, you know, simple plans showing the layout of the unit, elevations of the existing property, new elevations just showing changes in the facade. Right now, there's an overhead garage door, of course, and we're changing that to, you know, three windows on the front and exit door on the rear. And that concludes pretty much my presentation.
All right. Well done.
Thank you.
It was just long enough.
Yes.
Any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, where are you going to put the ninety-eight inch flat screen?
Ah, well, our proposal is to actually mount it from the ceiling. We have the latest technology in front of the closet door and it will fold down.
Thanks for playing along.
Any other questions for the applicant?
No.
All right. And if there's nobody else in the audience, but, you know, in case there's somebody hiding, is there anyone that would like to comment? Okay, see, no one, and anybody online that would like to comment on this, please raise your hand, use the raise hand tool and we'll recognize you. In the meantime, Jasmine, what is the recommendation, please?
So staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony, and the staff report findings and recommendation, grant final site plan SP dash nine-nine-four-seven dash twenty-two-four, finding it in conformance with sections twenty-four dash twelve point six E and twenty-four dash twelve point six G of the city's zoning ordinance.
Great, thanks. Any questions on the recommendation?
Okay.
No?
No.
All right. I, I think this is going to head toward approval, so you're, you're free to lay out the inside however you like, but Danny, Commissioner Winborn was actually on to something. Take a hard look at the layout inside before you commit.
Yes.
You know, look at where the sofas go, where the bed goes, where the TV goes. Everybody wants to be able to see the TV.
Absolutely.
And, and the plan doesn't have any place for a TV.
They're young, they own laptops.
I'm, well, yeah, true. But, but seriously, think about just everything in there first, and then, then you can commit to where the bathroom goes, the closet goes, and all that stuff, and it'll, you'll end up in a good place.
Absolutely. I agree.
Yeah. All right, is there any concerns?
Just, I think we're, we've been working in the city to try and figure out ways to add some additional housing stock into our existing properties, existing neighborhoods without, you know, really disrupting the neighborhood with, you know, a great deal of sort of big mansionization or any of those stuff that, you know, is disruptive, but adds housing potentially. This is great, and I know it doesn't fit into our no need to talk to us criteria, but I think this is a great addition. So I'm glad to have the ability to, you know, make sure, and I did look at the aerial properties to make sure that this one foot six proper, you know, setback is, is, is fine. I think it's great. So I'm excited to see an ADU come in, so.
But, and it's also nice that, you know, family can be together and still have their own space.
Depends. Depends, depends on the family.
Do you speak from experience, Danny? Yeah, I have three people miles that keep coming back their boomerang.
Danny's has, Danny has plans for his garage too.
Yeah.
All right, great, thanks. Any other concerns with the proposal? All right, is there a motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I move that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony, and the staff report findings and recommendations, grant final site plan SP nine-nine dash, nine-nine-four-seven dash two-zero-two-four, finding it in conformance with sections twenty-four dash twelve point six E and twenty-four dash twelve point six G of the city's zoning ordinance with no conditions.
Second.
It's been moved in the second. And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thanks very much. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
All right, that takes us to, from the commission, Carol, may I start with you tonight?
I have nothing to report.
Lloyd?
Nothing.
Matt?
Nothing for me.
Danny?
Yes. I just want to publicly.
Admonish me for nothing.
No.
Not making it to your event? That's all right.
No, I just want to publicly, publicly congratulate Greg on his ascension to the Director of Planning and Code Administration. It is a well-deserved promotion. You have been an amazing resource for us, and I'm, I'm happy for you and your family that you have this opportunity.
Well, thank you, and I look forward to continuing to work with the planning commission, obviously in my new capacity, but I do appreciate it, so thank you.
Sure.
We feel like we're in good hands, so it's great.
Yes.
Selfishly, it's good.
So, so Jasmine is our, yes, thank you, and welcome Jasmine to, to help us out. I mean, you've been great, so it's just wonderful that you all are getting greater opportunities. That's wonderful to see you move up in your career. Hello?
Can't be haunted already.
Sounds good. Yeah, I'll echo that. Congratulations, Greg. Great, great to see you move into that position, and I know we're, we're in good hands.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And you've got something for us tonight, right?
I have a couple of things for you tonight. So first, I did want to provide you a quick update on the land use master plan update and kind of where we are at the moment. and kind of where we are at the moment. So we are in the early stages of the land use master plan update. We're kind of in the gate, the data gathering stage. We don't have any dates yet of when we're really going to kick this off publicly, but we will start it off with a joint work session with the Mayor's City Council and Planning Commission.
Good.
In the meantime, we are looking also to probably put together a project page, do some initial surveys and things like that to kind of really get it started off. Once we do start off, we do anticipate probably a two-year process to get through the entire thing. We're we plan on obviously a very robust public engagement process, again, building off a lot of the lessons learned with the Lake Forest Mall master plan, as well as what we've kind of started off with RETO when we went through that process as well.
Great.
So that's kind of where we are today. Like I said, it's very early still, so I don't really have any dates to say or lock in with the commission tonight, but we will let you know as soon as we are ready to start the next stage.
Sounds good, thank you.
And then also, you have received the calendar.
Calendar, yes.
For next year. Hopefully, there's no concerns. It should follow our typical process as normal on our what our meeting dates.
Well, it looks like January is two and four, not one and three, of course, because of holiday.
Yeah, so we did move it around based off holidays.
Right.
But it should generally follow your same standards. Moving forward, though, we are going to try to get back.
Don't forget, don't show up here on January first looking for me.
We are going to try to get back to sending emails and putting stuff on your calendars, on your through email.
That'll be great, thank you.
So in the new year, look look forward.